Good evening. Today's Monday, October 19th, 2015. It is 7:40. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you call the roll.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
York, absent. Toledo.
Here.
Healy, absent. Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have a quorum. We are in session. On to Agenda Item 3, receipt of written communications, pardon me, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit? Please identify yourself.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan, please come on up and hand whatever it is you have to Clerk Spencer. Anyone else at this time that has any written communication, please raise your hand that they wish to submit. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 4, Public Forum. Public Forum is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes out of respect for the work we have to do here this evening and also out of respect for other folks that may want to speak. Once you've been identified, we ask that you go to the microphone over there and please identify yourself for the record as we are recording this. Addresses are optional. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed up for Public Forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have one that signed up this evening, Kathy Jordan, 556 Fairfield, Elmhurst.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Jordan and I live at 556 Fairfield, of course, in Elmhurst. Mayor Morley and the City Council, I am here on behalf of the Elmhurst Senior Commission. The Senior Citizens Commission would like the City Council to revisit the transportation program Ride Dupage for senior residents and for people with disabilities. The Senior Citizens Commission in May 2008 voted and recommended to the city the passage of the transportation program Ride Dupage. Ride Dupage was explored, discussed, and approved by the Public Affairs and Safety Committee, and on November 17th, 2008, Ride Dupage was approved 14 to nothing by the Elmhurst City Council. However, due to the economic downturn, Ride Dupage was not implemented. The Senior Citizens Commission in November 2009 again voted to recommend and advocate that the council move forward with the implementation of the transportation program Ride Dupage. The request was publicly presented to the council on November 16th, 2009. The Senior Citizens Commission in May 2015 again has voted to recommend and advocate the council to revisit the implementation of the program Ride Dupage for our community. We are providing you with backup materials and rationale that include: copy of the minutes of the November 17th, 2008 council meeting where approval of the program was unanimously approved, council presentations prepared by staff leading up to the 2008 affirmative council decision of Ride Dupage program for our Elmhurst community, and supportive letters from Elmhurst Senior Citizens Commission containing information and rationale supporting the committee reports. As a point of information, Wheaton, Glen Allen, Naperville, and the townships of Lisle, Naperville, Wheaton, and Milton have partnered with Ride Dupage. Just recently, Addison Township implemented the Ride Dupage program as well. The Senior Commission is recommending that the city of Elmhurst consider partnering and engaging Addison and York Townships to help defray the cost of this transportation program. Some benefits of Ride Dupage: provides seamless transportation for all seniors and people with disabilities, goes to any location in Dupage County and will also go into Cook County to hospitals and medical appointments, has no limitations, and is user-friendly; is dependable; timeliness of pickup and delivery times are monitored very closely; provides extensive training for all drivers and cleanliness of cabs, and that is the top priority; and provides ride-sharing and handicapped accessible vans. Transportation is an essential element to keeping older adults independent and actively connected to their communities. The lack of adequate transportation options has a significant impact on the ability of older adults to obtain essential services including health and medical care, nutrition, social services, and employment opportunities. This also affects their ability to engage in life-enhancing recreational activities. Seniors need a reliable source of transportation. Ride Dupage fills that need. We are asking that you continue to keep Elmhurst not only a desirable place to live in and raise a family, but also a desirable place to retire in. We are depending on you to provide the leadership, forward-thinking, and the initiative to do the right thing by following through with the commitment in November 17th, 2008, and implement Ride Dupage for our community. Thank you for your consideration on this very important issue of Ride Dupage transportation program which promotes independence for seniors and for people with disabilities. Submitted by Kathy Jordan, Chairman for Elmhurst Senior Citizens Commission; the Transportation Committee, Ruth Maple, Chairman, who is here; Grayson Haller; and Georgia Dolan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Clerk Spencer, is there anyone else?
No one else signed up.
Okay, that's it for people who have signed up for Public Forum at this time. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet but wishes to address the council? Please raise your hand so I can get a count. Okay, I see two. We'll start with Ms. Sullivan.
Kathleen Sullivan, tonight you have on the agenda the Madison School IGA. I look forward to that getting approved and getting on with the project, and you have a couple of other bids for some construction so we can get shoveling the ground for storm detention. Thanks.
Mr. Pagas, you had your hand up.
Claude Pagas, 566 West Gladys. It was an interesting meeting last time the council met. As far as the signs, that was a far-gone conclusion. Nothing was going to change. But I think what was more important was what an alderman asked. How do you replace the money that you're giving away, tax dollars? But he shouldn't have stopped there. I have a nice article here about, which I've asked for about before, the MIIMET. It's got the whole section of Dupage County in trouble. Going to our senators, Durbin and Kerr, is not necessarily going to solve the problem. How is this council going to replace that And the council always makes a little speech about, "Well, Claude, you know, we can't worry about what our elected bodies do." Now, I guess he can't. You, as council members, have put the citizens of this town behind $60 million worth of general obligation bonds. The Park District has got about $11 million in general obligation bonds, and the school board outweighs all of you. You've got a lot of problems coming up. Public Works already wants, what, $50 million? City Manager says he hasn't got enough money. So not thinking about what other legislative bodies do is a fallacy. You don't live in Shangri-La. They're passing general obligation bonds, and there's a finite number of residents in this town. And as that number increases, their burden becomes greater and greater. And that's before any legislation is passed just to maintain this town, which is in sad shape. Your own consultant said the water system leaks like a sieve. Your streets are falling apart. Your sewer system is taking care of the plant, but then you had the Attorney General come in with the EPA and slam dunk you. Didn't expect to spend that money. So tell me, gentlemen, the question was asked. I always hear an alderman say, "Well, we're going to support these businesses, and we're going to get sales tax, and it's going to improve." And then at the next meeting, we turn around and we say, "Well, you're going to have 50, 60 percent of your sales tax." How do you replace it? How do you replace those millions? And that's what it amounts to. And after you're gone, it goes on and on.
Ms. Pagas, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments.
So, once you walk off that dais, you're just a homeowner. So you better start thinking about the other legislative bodies and just the burden they're adding to you and every time you vote.
Okay, anyone else for Public Forum at this time? Seeing none, we'll go on to announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Jim? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Sabatino.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Deuter and I will be hosting a First Ward Town Hall meeting on Thursday, November 5th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Elmhurst College in Circle Hall. All residents are welcome and encouraged to attend.
Okay, any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to Consent Agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman wishes to see pulled to provide further comment or vote no? Alderman Bram?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, two items, 6.8 and 6.22.
6.8, 6.22, 6.8, 6.22. Okay, anyone else? All right, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus items 6.8 and 6.22. Motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Wagner, second by Alderman Palmsky. Clerk Spencer.
Wagner.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York, absent.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved, minus items 6.8 and item 6.22. On to item 6.8. Clerk Spencer, I would ask that you read the recommendation.
The Public Works and Buildings Committee has reviewed the intergovernmental agreement presented by School District 205. Based on the recommendations of the Burke Report and the desire to provide stormwater relief to this area of the city, it is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the City Council enter into a intergovernmental agreement between the city of Elmhurst and the Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 for the construction, operation, and maintenance of stormwater and other improvements at Madison Early Childhood Center, and the city attorneys be directed to prepare the appropriate documents. Signed by Jim Kennedy, Chairman; Marty Deuter, Vice Chairman; Patrick Wagner, unsigned by Michael J. Bram.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy, this is a report out of your committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll defer to Alderman Bram, who pulled the...
Alderman Bram, you pulled this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. This is a very large step in the direction of flood mitigation. I was unable to attend this meeting, and therefore it is unsigned by me. Even though I do have some reservation of this draft IGA, I think the asks are a little bit rich from what I would like to see in an intergovernmental agreement. I am in support of it, and I felt that it was needed for me to publicly state because it is showing that I am unsigned on this. That is because I could not attend the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to please call the roll.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York, absent.
Aye.
Healy, absent.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 6.8 is approved. I will chat a little more about that under Mayor Report. On to Agenda Item 6.22. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the ordinance.
It's ordinance O-67-215, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a sales tax sharing agreement between the city of Elmhurst and Ed Napleton, Elmhurst Imports, Inc.
Once, pardon me. Okay, sorry, Agenda Item 6.22. This is, this came out of Finance. Alderman Dunn? Yes.
You need to put it on the floor.
Well, to put this before council, I would ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Alderman Dunn, Alderman Toledo. Alderman Dunn?
As many of you might recall, last council meeting, we approved the report for the sales tax incentive for the Ed Napleton Acura, and we have the ordinance before us on the agenda. However, the ordinance is, needs a little more work, and we're requesting to defer that to the next council meeting, which would be November 2nd.
So according to our code, a proposed ordinance can be held for passage until the next meeting if three aldermen so request. Before I answer the request, it says that the request shall be submitted in writing prior to the first alderman's response to the roll call on the proposed vote. So he could either write me a note right now, or he can make a proposal to just postpone till date certain?
You can do that too, Mayor. Either will accomplish the same goal.
Does he withdraw his original motion, then?
I think it's just been moved. I don't, did you ask to defer it, Alderman Dunn?
He just did.
Okay. Yeah, you remove that, and then we'd look for a motion.
Okay, so instead of putting it before us, he and Alderman Toledo can withdraw, and then he can make a motion to postpone till date certain, which would be...
I thought he did that already. I thought you did that already.
Just to avoid you having to write, put something in writing, and I don't want to go against our rules, date certain would be in the next meeting, which would be November 2nd. So as Chairman, I'm saying, would you be willing to withdraw your request to approve the ordinance as read and replace it with, and your second has to withdraw as well?
Yes, I withdraw my motion.
If your intent is to hold it over until two weeks from now, the next council meeting, I will entertain a motion to postpone this ordinance till date certain, which is November 2nd.
Yes, that's what we'd like to do, postpone.
Second by Alderman Toledo. I actually don't think an ordinance, motion to postpone is debatable.
It's not.
Okay, so that's not debatable. What? Yeah, I think we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor of a motion to postpone till date certain, respond with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, not unanimous, but carried. On to... Commit, sorry. On to committee reports. Clerk Spencer, give me a second. Committee report, Agenda Item 7.1. Clerk Spencer, I would ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the City Council authorize a surplus declaration from TIF 1 in the amount of $167,786 to be distributed in November 2015. Signed by Kevin Al York, Chairman; Bob Dunn, Vice Chairman; Noel P. Toledo; and Mark P. Sabatino.
Okay, this is a report out of Finance. I will entertain, to put this before council, I will entertain a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Dunn, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Dunn, this is your report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As some of you might be aware of or recall, we have an IGA from 2004 regarding TIF 1 and the release of certain properties in that TIF. The arrangement was to pull out some properties early from the TIF and allow some of the taxing bodies to enjoy early property tax prior to the expiration of the TIF, and that was five years early. And so the payouts to those taxing bodies over five years ended in 2009, 2010 fiscal year, and then over the last five years, the city has been able to pay themselves back the money that was deferred. This last year, there was a surplus. We've been made whole in reference to that agreement. So the surplus was $167,000, and we're excited that the, we were able to finally generate that surplus after the initial agreement was developed 10 years ago, and I think it worked out for all the taxing bodies. So I would ask for your support in passing this particular report. Thanks.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to please call a roll.
Dunn.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York, absent. Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 7.1 is approved. On to reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. 8.1, Mayor Morley. I'll make mine quick. Pardon me. October 15th came and went, and O'Hare has opened up their new runway. I have not, it's been two and a half days now. I have not gone onto the website to track any of the, gone onto any of those websites we mentioned in the past to track and see if there's been a significant change. I assume that our neighbors to the north in the 2nd and 3rd ward will have their ears and eyes open to see. But the, when we had our meeting with the FAA, they indicated that there should be a, what I would consider a significant change in air traffic as it relates to Elmhurst and specifically the north end of Elmhurst. We'll see. But that happened, that's two and a half, three days ago. Haven't seen any reports. FAA did respond. It said they would, as I mentioned in our previous meeting, we have a host of questions for them. They are going to respond to us in writing. I did submit that, one of the points Alderman Wagner brought up when I gave the update, I've asked for the new, what I'll call a west approach map with this new runway opening up. In the meeting, the FAA discussed what the west approach would look like, but they didn't provide us with a map. So they claimed that certain things were going to happen with regard to takeoffs, and we're just asking for a map that backs that up. They did commit to give that to us, but it's going to be along with the questions. Semplex, they had a soft grand opening a couple of weeks ago. They're having their official grand opening this Thursday at 3:30. I know elected officials have been invited. And then, allow me to opine just a little bit on what was done here today. Let me get the Agenda Item correct. Agenda Item 6.8, it was a report out of Public Works, and it was an intergovernmental agreement with the school district. And it's a pretty, pretty significant issue that I think deserves a little more discussion. We, as council is aware, two and a half years ago, when I was elected, I formed what I call the Communications Committee, and the sole purpose of that Communications Committee was to foster an intergovernmental agreement, intergovernmental agreements with both the Park District and the School District. So I asked two members of the City Council to serve on that, Alderman Kennedy and Alderman Palmsky, and subsequently, Schools and Parks also had two folks on there. So it was a committee of six that met and has been meeting at this point for over two years, and not a lot of, well, didn't move as fast as I had hoped, let me put it that way. And I think there was frustration at every level. Elected officials, residents, residents affected by flooding, even the commission itself, Communications Committee itself, expressed frustration. So back in late June, I believe, we made the bold decision to make these meetings public, and I think we're seeing, we're bearing some of the fruit of that. We're having these conversations in front of the public. We are no longer sitting up here updating the public about what he said or what she said. The public has been invited to attend, and they can hear what he said and what she said. And I think we've made some great progress, and I really want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Alderman Kennedy and Alderman Palmsky, who I don't think they thought it would be a two-year process to get to our first agreement. But here we are. It's the first of many, I'm hoping. I know that the schools have turned over the next phase of this discussion for the Madison, Madison, for the Brian Gravelot. They have turned over the responsibility of that primary discussion over to the new superintendent, Dave Moyer. I know that Dave and City Manager Grabowski, Mr. Moyer and City Manager Grabowski have talked on numerous occasions. We actually have a draft of an agreement. I believe that if it hasn't gone to them, we'll go to them later than tomorrow. So we do, we've had a couple of meetings and a couple of phone calls already. An initial draft of an agreement for Brian Gravelot was drafted by our attorneys, and we'll be going to the school board tomorrow, specifically Dave Moyer. And our next meeting is, is it the 29th?
29.
At the request of the Park District, so that's a week from this Thursday, so the 29th. At the request of the Park District three weeks ago, instead of having a meeting every two weeks, we asked, they asked for a little more time because they would have a committee meeting and two park board meetings in the interim, and they thought they might be able to come back with more of an update on the 29th. So we will be having our scheduled meeting for the Communications Committee on the 29th, and both Parks and Schools are invited to provide updates where we are. But I do want to draw attention to the first agreement, first intergovernmental agreement in a process that's been over two years. So I think that's fantastic. And that's it for me. City Manager Grabowski.
Just one item, a reminder that the annual Joint Review Board meeting for the TIF districts will be held next Monday at 6 o'clock before our committee meetings.
Okay. That's an important one. That's really where facts and figures are discussed, but it's important to note, just to tag on to that, that discussion of surplus, or any kind of surplus or projected surplus, really happens at the Finance Committee level, which is what you saw tonight in one of the reports. Okay, on to ordinances.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Oh, Mr. Alderman Bram?
Thank you. I just was hoping to get a reporter an update. I see that Public Affairs and Safety Committee talked and addressed the Elmhurst Trolley Report on the, you know, the trolley over this past summer. I was wondering if the city manager could speak a little bit and give details to the public on how the trolley service went this year.
Good question.
I'm happy to. We're putting together a written report for the council that the committee asked us to do, so that'll be coming out to the council. The results were... The results were better than what we expected as far as ridership goes. And the committee suggested that we look at next year's program and possibly expanding the time and some other enhancements to that, which will be in the report.
Thank you. By reading the minutes, I was not aware a report was coming, so thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Onto ordinances. 9.1. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the ordinance.
Zero dash 68 dash 2015. An ordinance authorizing execution of a purchase and sale agreement for the property commonly known as 297 North Geneva Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois.
Okay, to put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Hanquist. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment. This is just another piece of the flood mitigation program. It's a purchase of property for that purpose.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to please call the roll.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Agenda item 9.1 passes. Onto agenda item 9.2. Another ordinance. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the ordinance.
ZO dash 14 dash 2015. An ordinance granting variations to the property commonly known as 253 South York Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. 60126, PIN number 06 dash 01 dash 312 dash 003.
Okay, put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Any discussion? Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you call the roll.
Levin.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent. Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 9.2 is approved. Onto resolutions. Agenda item 10.1. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the resolution.
This is R dash 112 dash 2015. A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for the Webster Avenue Storm Water Improvement Project. Project number 15 dash 42.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Kennedy.
I believe because we're going to be doing the report and the ordinance in the same evening, we have to suspend the rules to do this, correct?
Depends on how the report was written.
It was in the report.
Okay, then we're good.
Just let's double check before we get there. What report number was it? Agenda item number?
6.11.
6. what?
11.
Yes, suspend the rules was in there, that was approved. So always good to double check. Any other comments?
I just wanted to highlight the fact that this is another stormwater mitigation project. We're doing this, the report and the ordinance in the same, in the same evening because we want to be able to get the project going. If anybody's been out where Oak Meadows Golf Course is, you've seen how much earth has been moved between July and now. Basically, they're getting all the earth moved, getting everything in place, and then they can grow grass and start playing grass in 20, playing golf, excuse me, in 2017. Our hope here is to get everything done before the snow flies, grow grass in the spring, and this will be online early next year.
Great, okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer?
Kennedy.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 9 point, whoops, sorry. Agenda item 10.2 is approved. Onto other business. Any other business?
We don't have another resolution.
What am I missing? Oh!
That was 1.
That was 10.1. Sorry. For the record, resolution 10.1, agenda item 10.1, resolution R dash 112 dash 2015 has been approved. Onto agenda item 10.2. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you please read the resolution.
R dash 113 dash 2015. A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for the 2015 Fire Hydrant and Water Main Valve Repair Program. Project number 15 dash 16.
Okay, this is another one where we, I'll remind the council before I ask for a motion. This is another one that was a report earlier in the evening. And the report did ask for a suspension of the rules to allow for this resolution to be voted on this evening. To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy, any comments?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
No comments. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to please call the roll.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 10.2 is approved. Any other business? I will take the opportunity, under my report, I did not have an opportunity to thank the school board for approving this and sending it to us. Any other business? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.